Good evening. I will call the January 21st council meeting to order. All members have been reported here as present. Now I'd invite you to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance followed by a silent prayer in lieu of invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item four on our agenda this evening is the reading of the minutes of the previous meeting.
Make a motion to approve and put on file.
We have a motion. Is there a second? Motion a second. Any discussion on the minutes? Hearing none. Moving to vote. All in favor, signal it by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Next item on the agenda is the explanation of the visitor speaking procedure. Welcome to those who are here in person here this evening and those joining us at home. The speaking procedure is follows. You'll be allowed to speak on an item on the agenda in which you will have five minutes to do so after being recognized by a council member. Be sure to hit the push button on the base of the microphone so you're picked up on TV for Tom's as he's recording and those that were live streaming. So that takes care of our visitor speaking procedure. We'll move into item number six, which is Mayor Ruwink's, my report. Council members, staff, and Wisconsin Rapids area residents, with the holiday season concluded, calendars turned to a new year, people settled into their New Year's resolution. You may wonder what the city has in store for the upcoming year. As I enter my 20th month as your mayor and operate the city under the recently passed city budget, we look to what a new year can bring. Over the coming weeks, I'll be meeting with our staff to review our agreed-upon performance objectives. We will discuss and set 2014 objectives in those meetings. Many of the objectives will fall into the following priority areas, which were identified in my previous State of the City address, first being growing our local economy, creating and supporting opportunities for residents to participate, and modernizing and streamlining city operations to be more efficient. In terms of the Rapid Improvement Initiative, progress continues to be made on the five projects that are underway. The Internal Steering Committee is preparing a communication to the council and to the community as an update on this initiative. In terms of the social media intern, our intern is nearing the work, nearing the end of her allotted time with us. She has completed and we are reviewing her work on a citywide social media policy. She has been meeting with departments and myself on a weekly basis who have and don't yet have a social media presence. Our city Facebook page has been launched, and so for those individuals on Facebook, you can search for the City of Wisconsin Rapids and like the page to be able to be made aware of upcoming events, issues, and announcements. Before the council tonight are two important items to support the above goal, speaking specifically to modernization and efficiency for more effectiveness. The first being a full-time ordinance control position created from three part-time positions, and the second is a Director of Innovation and Technology position. The two positions come as a result of a number of conversations and feedback from residents and from much research and discussion of staff and conversations with council members. It is my hope that through the information shared up to this point, you as council members understand the merits and reasons to support the positions. Next Wednesday, I will present my annual, my second annual State of the City address at the library. In the address, I will highlight the accomplishments of 2013 and introduce my priorities for 2014. Now, reception will begin at 6:30 PM. It's hosted by the League of Women Voters of the Wisconsin Rapids area and McMillan Library, and new this year, we'll bring City Hall directly to you, where residents will be able to interact with city department heads and ask questions and have their concerns heard. My remarks will begin at 7:00 PM, and all are invited and encouraged to attend. Council members and residents, I encourage you, as always, to reach out if you have questions or concerns. I publish a regular community update to Facebook, the mayor's page on the city's website, and a mayor's blog. I have a monthly radio show and take your calls on WFHR on the third Wednesday of each month, and past shows are available on YouTube and run on RCA. As always, feel free to contact me directly, send me an email, or stop by my office as my door is always open. Thank you. Item seven is the annexation request. Item A is a request from older person Young to renew the petition for direct annexation and an ordinance approving the annexation for property in the town of Grand Rapids located on the northeast corner of Eighth Street and Whitrock Avenue, specifically Parcell 0700846B, 0700850, and 0700851. The petition and ordinance were not adopted at the council's meeting held in December 17th of 2013. The applicant is Miller Valentine Group, and attachments one and two are attached. Council members, what are your wishes regarding that request?
Well, I would like to point out that, and I apologize, I had out-of-town business. I was not able to be at the last council meeting. It's rare, actually, that I miss a council meeting, but it happened to be that meeting. And I think we were also down another alder, if I remember correctly, or correct? Oh, no, just me. All right. Well, regardless, I received Sue, and I'm sure the rest of the alderpersons received Sue's memo that described a way to bring this back, and that's what I've chosen to do. So I would like to renew the petition, and actually, I'm going to make a motion to approve it. I don't know if you want me to do that now, if you want discussion first. I mean, I can make the motion, I guess, and then have. So I'm going to make that motion to approve.
So we have a motion to approve, or to renew the petition to approve the direct annexation and the ordinance. Subsequently, I'm assuming the ordinance approving the annexation for the property in the town of Grand Rapids. Is there a second?
Second.
And if you could hit your button.
Second.
Jim, thank you.
Oh, this one as well.
For Shane's records up here.
Second, there we go.
Thank you. In which case, we'll open it up for discussion. Elder person Kirkpatrick?
Thank you. I guess first tonight, I want to speak regarding last month's meeting wherein I had said when I first started speaking that we'd get on to recognizing individuals who wanted to speak against that, what was presented to us. So before I get into what I want to say again tonight, I want to see if there's anyone in the audience who wanted to speak against the proposal as it is presented here tonight or as it was last month. Sir in the back? If you want to come up to the podium and just state your name.
State your name, address, and if you're speaking, I'm assuming against in terms of Andrew Kirkpatrick. And as a reminder, this is the request for annexation. This isn't a request for anything beyond the annexation as of...
If I may, we did speak regarding the project proposal last meeting. I do not believe we can limit people from speaking about that at this meeting either.
I'm not saying that we were limiting them. If people want to speak to the rezoning or other purposes of the project, there's an item on the agenda following item seven specifically, specific to that. But if you'd like to invite them to the podium, be all ears, anything that they would like to speak to. Dean? Make sure the podium is, or the mic is on, please, on the podium. There's a push, there's a button that says push.
Okay, there we go. Okay.
Thank you.
So am I speaking on the project or on the annexation, or both?
Whatever you'd like, sir.
Okay. I guess I'm speaking on the project. I got sidelined from last time, so I didn't realize this was going on so quickly. So I was notified that this was coming up tonight. I speak on behalf of the Wisconsin Rapids Apartment Association. I'm the past president of that and also president of the WAA, which is Wisconsin Apartment Association. So currently there, if you look at the newspaper, there's about 18 ads with vacancies in Wisconsin Rapids, and some of those vacancies have anywhere from one to three units per ad. So we have about 30 vacancies in Wisconsin Rapids approximately right now. So with adding another 56 or 54 units, whatever the number is of low income, I'm not sure it's the wisest thing for Wisconsin Rapids to do. This is an out-of-town investor. They're using government subsidy, and it's also, there's going to be a tax relief from the city also. And again, there's going to be a tax burden on fire and police and on the education with this project because it's going to bring more people in. Maybe it's going to be in the low income. And I'm already, we're already renting to low income. So our rents are near from 365 to 630 a month, and when we sit with vacancies, it hurts our bottom line also. And I just don't think this is a wise project for Wisconsin Rapids. I'd rather see us focus, Rapids focus, on bringing in 56 jobs. And if you look at jobs, it's just a one-time, you know, one-time situation where they're, maybe they're going to use local contractors, but that's a one-time thing. I think if you look at the big picture, and I'm not sure, I've been told from other people from the apartment association that could not be here tonight, that they don't even like that location being on A Street. So that's really all I have to say for now.
Thank you. Any other council members wishing to speak on the issue or wishing to recognize somebody else? Butch?
Actually...
Elder person Young?
And I appreciate the fact, although it's definitely self-serving, but if there are 30 vacancies, there might be a reason for that. I can honestly tell you that when my husband and I moved to this community, and then when we built our new home and needed to find a place to stay, yeah, there were vacancies, but they weren't places that I necessarily wanted to rent. So if somebody is coming to this community from out of town, I can't believe that their business model is to say, "We're just going to build something and no one's going to come." So I find it, again, self-serving that your association would say, "We don't want anything more." We don't want any more competition is basically what it is. So I, and I don't know. Andrew, you must be part of that association, or?
Nope.
Okay. But, and I thank you for clarifying that. But I guess that's my response to the individual who bravely stood up here and made his thoughts known.
Elder persons, any other individuals? Elder person Nash?
I just, just a quick comment. I don't remember anybody, I don't remember in the presentation last month anything about tax credits or anything. And even if there is, this wouldn't be the first development that we did, that tax credits were used. The Lowell Center, what is there now? I believe CAP Services uses, and I believe, what's the other one? I think the one over on Gainer now also is utilizing that kind of... And again, I don't, I don't remember anybody saying anything about low-income housing either. I don't, so, just, just to, you know, to clear that up because I don't remember that discussion last month.
Any further discussion by elder persons? I guess in light of allowing those opposed to speak, I would entertain the alternative to those that'd like to speak favorably on the request to annex.
I believe there was one individual that, here up in the front, that still wanted to speak against, sir.
Yield your time to do that? Butch?
I'm Butch Fensel. I own Prop. We're on 4111 Eighth Street South. I'm a business owner. Did construction in Wisconsin Rapids area for over 45 years. I was always told that the Eighth Street Business Quarter was a place for business, that over the years, the city was trying to remove residences because it's being a business corridor. Now you're introducing to put businesses, I mean, to put residences back on the Eighth Street Quarter. I'm not, I'm not against this project. I feel that there is a need. There always is. But I don't believe it's in this area. There's plenty of other acreage around Wisconsin Rapids where you can put this place. I don't believe it's, it'd be a good place on Eighth Street. That's all.
Elder person Nash?
Thank you. And if I could just respond to, we don't really have the project in front of us. We need the annexation, and then we need to do the zoning, I believe, and then they have to come to the city with a site plan or, and whatever, and there's wetlands there, I believe, or something has to do with. So we, you know, to say that it's going to be right on A Street is a little ahead of the game, I think. And as I drive around, maybe not Wisconsin Rapids, but other cities, there are Highway 10, for example, up in Point, heading out toward Waupaca. There's apartments right behind Target and they're, you know, so they're not, they're not on A Street, but they're not, they're not off Highway 10 either. I mean, it, there's the convenience of wanting to live there and having Walmart and Jim's Barbecue there, you know. I mean, it's to each his own, I guess. But I mean, to say that this project is right on A Street, I think is a little, little ahead of the game yet because once the, once the project comes back to Planning Commission, the Planning Commission discusses it, and we go through all the hoops and everything. We don't know what it's going to be, but the annexation, and I'm going to shut up after this because, as I said last month, you know, the annexation, the worst-case scenario, we annex and we change the zoning, we have a piece of property that's annexed into the city and it's buildable for whatever. It doesn't necessarily have to be this, this project, but this is the project that's in front of us now. And, so I think it's short-sighted to vote no, and that's why I voted yes last month, I guess.
Thank you. Other discussion? So gentleman with his, older person Young, did you, or, did you want to acknowledge the individual?
All right.
Okay. Yield your time. Would you come to the podium, please? State your name and your address, please, and your position.
Hi, my name is Darcy Held. I own or manage 60 properties, rental properties, within the city of Wisconsin Rapids. And I'll try not to be too self-serving, but my concern would be down the road, if you proceed on with annexation and approving the project, I want an equal playing field. You know, I can't, the city isn't going to be able to do anything about a federal or state tax break, but I want, certainly want you people, all they consider, making an equal playing field as possible and not providing a city tax break to more developers. Because you're in direct competition with us, and we certainly don't get city tax breaks. I didn't get any when I bought my units. My assessments all went up this year. So that's one, one thing I'd like the council to consider is this project if it goes forward. Thank you.
I think as a clarification, there were no city funds utilized to incentivize the developer. It was exclusively, as you alluded to, federal tax credits on the project that were, that are administered through the state. So there is no, there has been no proposal and no commitment by this council or the Planning Commission through a developer's agreement otherwise to support the development or incentivize the development. Mike, did you want, sorry, I was going to recognize Mike, the developer and the requester, to come to the podium if you'd like to speak to some of the other concerns or questions that were raised?
Sure. Thank you for reconsidering us and having us in front again this month. I'll start just briefly with some of the comments that were made here. First, you're correct, these are federal income tax credits. There's absolutely no city funding that we are requesting or will request. We'll pay taxes just like anybody else. One of the speakers mentioned rents of 365 to 630. I just want to remind, and I know we talked about this last time, our rents, we are allowed to charge up to 944 for a three-bedroom and up to 817 for a two-bedroom. Max income for individuals or families living in our units is $42,120. So just to put a kind of frame of reference for everyone to consider there, I know we've already talked about it. Regarding the vacancies, 30 vacancies, you know, I'm not going to dispute that. What I can tell you is that we went through a statewide study to determine areas. And Wisconsin Rapids wasn't the only area that we targeted, but it was one of a small handful that we selected out of a statewide study to come to. One of the things that highlighted for us to come here was a few things. At the time of the study, and that switches month to month, all apartments across the city were 94% occupied, which is a very healthy occupancy rate. But further, and this is where we think there may be an opportunity for maybe some updating of the housing stock, roughly 65% of all apartments in the city were built before 1980. So with that, you'll get a lot of, just kind of outdated, you know, it might be a three-bed, one-bath, things like that that, you know, as, as some had alluded to, maybe gives you some better options to rent. And that's kind of what, what drove us here. Speaking as far as being on the Eighth Street Corridor, we actually like to be on main corridors. We find it improves rentability, both from a visibility standpoint, but also, you know, renters typically aren't renting in one place, planning to set down for the next 20 years or so. And I would never propose single-family homes on this site. I mean, aside from the constraints of the size on that road, I don't think it would be appropriate. Three-story multifamily buildings, though, I think is, is a real nice buffer between kind of, it's sort of in-between commercial and residential, and it provides a buffer for the residential that's behind it. But also, it helps you develop the corridor a little bit in that it provides a relatively large number of residents close by to a lot of the retail establishments that could help drive business around there. Other things I just want to kind of reiterate, I know we already talked about, is it 56 units. It's roughly an $8 million investment. We will hire all of our subcontractors locally to the extent the trades are available here, and the estimate is about 75 jobs over the construction period, which lasts roughly a year. We have onsite management and maintenance as well. I think that roughly covers everything, but you know, I'm obviously happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
I think the concern's on the location as well. We've had a number of conversations about potential alternative sites. Just recognizing that there has been some chatter about that. So they have been proposed a number of alternative sites over the past four weeks, in which you've explored and that sort of thing. Do you want to give some comment on that at all?
I've actually actively looked for other sites, and we've had some difficulty. There is, there is other potential sites you could put apartments. However, the funding through WIDA determines pretty specific areas even within, it can't just be anywhere in the general area, but certain census tracts and the like. And I know one, one potential alternative we looked at was like a block too far to the north, which essentially means it can't get done. So we have been unable to identify other opportunities. But I do want to stress also, I think this is a great site for this product. It's not sort of a second-hand, you know, the best we could find. You know, my, my boss actually came out here last week to look at the site and kind of check out the area, and he was extremely happy with it and thinks it's a great location for this product. So...
Thank you. Further discussion on the annexation request? Elder person Kirkpatrick?
Thank you. I just wanted to say a few more things regarding this, and some of it's going to be a repeat from last month, but I'll repeat it just for Gene's sake. Okay, well, I'm going to say it again, anyway. It's been stated, you know, it was stated last month that this would be minimum of 50-year development. So if something happens down the line, 10 years, 20 years, 30 years down the line, we're no longer happy with this. We have no recourse. It's there for foreseeable future, for my foreseeable future and for many others. I don't, you know, we weren't provided any type of list as to other sites that you looked at. Two popped off the top of my head the other night, and as I was thinking about things over the last month, 16th, the corner of 16th and Pepper, which might be a little bit on the small side, and also directly behind Shopko. There's an extraordinarily large, probably close to five acres of land that has never been developed and is still a vacant field. I don't know if any of these places were considered, but it's, it's one of those other things to think about. Again, Mr. Fensley, you said pretty much right what I said last month, and I'm going to say it, you know, one more time. This is, you know, we're talking about annexation here, yes. However, we're talking about annexation coupled with a very specific proposal, and you cannot have one in this instance without the other. So we really are looking at not just an annexation request, but a project proposal request here as well, at least from my perspective. I know others would argue against that, but that is precisely how I see things. This is not an appropriate use of that land if it were to be annexed into the city. It's a business corridor, and a multifamily residence, again, in my opinion, is not a business. It's a residence. It's where people go to live, plain and simple. I'm going to vote against this again tonight for those reasons, for all the same reasons I spoke about last month. I would encourage other council members to vote against this again tonight. And I want to just make one other reminder here that very few times in the five years that I've been here have I encountered a time when someone came with a project proposal, whether there was annexation required or not, and the commissions, the committees, and this council did not approve precisely what that request was from the get-go. Maybe with a few minor caveats here and there, but let's not be so naive in ourselves that we sit here and say, "That may or may not happen." Because I think it's fairly clear that the developer is here to request this, and this is precisely what will happen if it's approved, whether we like it or not now, or whether we like it or not 10 years, 20 years, 30 years down the line. Thank you.
And I guess...
Elder person Young?
Thank you. In response to that, and I think Bob said it well earlier, this is an annexation request. You have an opportunity at the point that any project goes to planning and then comes back, for you to use your vote to stop a plan that isn't on the agenda, to me seems wrong. You have the opportunity to vote against any proposed use of that property at the appropriate time. This isn't it. And you can say that that's being naive, that this or that, but this isn't the time. You're using your vote when we need two-thirds of the council to put down the project, when the project shouldn't be part of the discussion. And I am just really frustrated with that. I think it's, quite frankly, an abuse of your vote, but that's just my opinion.
We, I will respectfully disagree with you in that they are, you know, part and parcel, one and the same.
Elder person O'Kamp?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I had one call in support of this, and it was from the property owner. You can't imagine the calls I've had from people in Wisconsin Rapids, not just in my district, but all over, opposing this. You will notice that some of these that are signed on the back, somebody lives in Nacusa, one lives in Pittsville, one lives in Port Edwards, and another lives in, on Church Avenue. There isn't too many that live in this Wisconsin Rapids residence that sign these. You know, down on 20th Avenue, 23rd Avenue South, there's a big complex being built down their apartments. It's being built by somebody that lives in town. The money's going to stay in town. I tried to figure out, was it last night or in the afternoon, just going by 40 apartments there, and if they paid $800, this company's taken no better than $400,000 out of this community, moving it down to Tennessee and their business. They're taking money from Wisconsin Rapids and taking it out of the state. Can you imagine that? Can you imagine how, I know they're going to employ people to build it, but after it's built, how many people are going to work there? Very few. They have a half dozen at the time to watch those apartments. And as Andrew says, if this annexation is approved, you know darn well, this complex will be built. I have a hard time voting for this when my people call me and tell me to vote against it. So I'll be voting against it also tonight. So I'll be voting against it also tonight. And if there's any other comments, people can get up and talk to. Anybody that wants to talk, I'll recognize them. But I have problems with sending this much money out of the city to a company that's out of the state even. Thank you.
Alderperson Nash?
Thank you. And that's a comment that I have to respond to, because, oh, I don't know if there's eight, 32 units where my parents lived, and I've been mailing checks every month to Milwaukee. The company that owns those apartments is out of Milwaukee. Swindrowski, is it Swindrowski that owns the ones by the Ford Garage, the ones over by Washington School from Stevens Point? So to say somebody from out of town can't come here and develop something, I just don't agree with that. And another thing, nobody called me one way or the other on this, so I, and, you know, and I, yeah, and your district, I don't know if you got calls or not, but, so I don't, that's always been kind of something for me, but I didn't get any calls one way or the other, so I guess I'm just making up my own mind.
Any further discussion? I recognize anybody wishing to speak in favor of the project. I saw one individual stand up, please come to the podium, make sure your mic is on, and state your name and your address, please.
Yeah, my name's Mark Novak. I live in Saratoga on Church Avenue. I am an eighth owner of the property. What I see here, and I understand everybody's situation, what they think, if I was looking for an apartment or somewhere to live, I moved to the area, if I see something that looks very nice and attractive, and I'm close to shopping, I'm close to doctors, I'm close to food, you can walk, you're walking distance to these places, I think that, you know, and I guess, this is kind of like a maybe biased idea or whatever, but I'm thinking that if I come in, you got Walmart, you're driving by Walmart, you get over to Portezzi's, you get over to Jim's BBQ Shack, all of a sudden, there's an apartment complex. I don't feel like you're in downtown Wisconsin Rapids. I feel like you're just entering a city that has a beautiful apartment complex with elderly people that are available to walk and shop, or go to the doctor, or go to the bank, or just take a walk, do whatever they want to do. They have the sidewalks are there. I feel it's a perfect place to have an apartment complex that's been proposed. Thank you.
I guess there's another individual. Steve, did you want to come speak on the issue? And there's another individual on the left, my left.
All right. Good evening. My name is Steve Abrahamson, and I would like to thank Andrew for pointing something out. The language of the request now does tie this whole annexation to the project. So realistically, by a no vote, you are voting against the project. What I'd like to know is, is it possible for us to strip out the Valentine Group and just pass it as a normal annexation? That property would be valuable to Wisconsin Rapids. I'm the chief executive director of Wisconsin Business Coalition. We could actually use that property to try to draw more business into Rapids. That way, there's more people that are employed, you won't need low-income housing. So is it possible to strip out the Valentine Group out of it? So that is just about the annexation of the property.
The request had to come from somewhere, and so it would have to be, come from another requester, and I defer to the city attorney if she's got anything additional to say on that.
Right. The request is actually from the property owners, and Miller Valentine Group is here as their agent for the annexation. It is just an annexation. I'm not sure.
But with their title in there, it's.
Well, right, we usually identify the person who's coming, and they provided us materials ahead of time. Right. I mean, I guess, it's up to the property owner what they wish to do with the property after it's annexed. I'm assuming, you know, there may even be a contractual obligation with Miller Valentine Group to do this project if it is annexed. That's probably going to happen, but I guess I'm, this is a simple annexation, and we can't say we're going to annex it for this purpose or that purpose. The property owner is free to do with it what they want, once it's annexed. So I guess you'd have to ask the property, you know, talk to the property owner if the annexation is successful, and talk about other options, but they obviously feel that this is what they want to do, and that's the petition before us is for the annexation.
Thank you.
Thank you for the question and clarification. Pam, did you want to come to the podium? I see you indicated you'd like to speak.
Hi. My name is Pam. Pam Novak, and I am one-eighth owner of that property. And I have been, I was at the last month's meeting and heard some things that were possibly good or thought about, and things that I would like to reiterate. One thing that was brought up is that that's not what we want to see when we come into Wisconsin Rapids. And as was said prior to me, not sure who, that said, driving into Wisconsin Rapids as a geographical line is when you get, you know, where the four-lane used to start, but now that it's all four-lane. To me, and others from the lakes, and people that have called and said things to us, too, but I could give you a list, but that would be hearsay, that when you get into Wisconsin Rapids, it basically starts when you come over and up to Lake Hill, I think, and we got Tractor Supply and those businesses and Walmart. Getting to the area where our land is, is pretty much, you feel like you've already been in the city. So it's not directly, right when you come into the city, you see a huge apartment building that's going to be beautiful and be able to have new housings for people that would track from out of the area. It's not going to be just for our people to rent, but people from other areas that, you know, that would want to come here for whatever it may be, family, work, or a nice place to live. We've had this land for 10 years, and I sit and listen to everyone, and it sounds like we have people pounding on city door to say, hey, we want to come here. And as a family of eight, that was, this was given to us not anymore, because we've paid through our nose for the taxes on this, for 10 years. No one has given us an opportunity, no one has brought any interest. We thought we had one with Mr. Zerflu, and somehow that went into his pocket, and we were out of the deal. Now, after 10 years of sitting there for us eight, who are just people that grew up here and want to, you know, have this be sold, I don't see where it's fair that eight people can say, you can't have that there, or we can't do that for you. It's, you know, people from, you had said, Ms. Hoekamp, that people from Pittsville and all that, we have a lot of people, too, that say the other way. So I just feel after 10 years of us trying to sell it, and this is such a hard time, that we should be welcoming something, basically whatever it could be, to bring revenue into our city, to let this please be a possibility for this annex and this project. It's 10 years that we've owned it, and it's just, you know, that's $9,000 a year in taxes that have gone out our window, and that's for 10 years. So I thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. Any other individuals wishing to address the body? Seeing none. I think there's one point that Andrew had brought up, that I think, you know, as somebody that did get a lot of calls on the matter, I won't reiterate the calls and the conversations I had, but, you know, in terms of recourse of development, I think every development has a life cycle, and I think we often wonder what sort of recourse we have of a bunch of auto dealership, vacant auto dealerships today. We have zero recourse. The nature of the community is to allow business to occur. In this case, we've got someone who willfully wants to annex to the city, and I think, given the opportunity and the merits of the project, I think it's an opportunity for us to welcome the property into the city, and then move on to the next phase of the debate. So that would be my piece, my two cents on the matter, and I, being the mayor, that's, I need to say my two cents on the matter. So any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll move into a vote. Please cast your ballots.
Motion carried. Six As, two Nays.
Thank you. Item eight. Item five from the December 2nd Planning Commission report concerning action on Plan 130802, Miller Valentine Group. The applicant is requesting rezoning pending the annexation, which was just approved, from the R2-1 and 2-family residential to the B2 general commercial district. Subject property is at 4.45 acres and is located on the northeast corner of Eighth Street South, the Whitrock Avenue, and the attachment is number three.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second recorded up here. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move into a vote. All those, please cast your ballots.
Motion carried. Seven As and one Nay.
Thank you. Thank you for those being, that were here tonight on this issue. Item number nine, under New Business, item A is Mayor Ruwink's appointment to the Industrial Development Commission, see attachment number four.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion. Is there a second? Nash, okay. Shane said he's slow. Thank you. We motion a second. Any discussion? I see a couple of, yep, thank you. So the attorney's request, suggestion, I should say, I will read the appointment. To all Alderpersons, the following appointments are submitted for your approval by myself. The Industrial Development Commission, Heather Gigi, 1001 Lincoln Street, replacing Richard Kelcher, whose term has expired for a term expiring April 30th of 2017. Andrew Kirkpatrick, appointed as the Alderperson member for a term expiring April 15th of 2014. And Lee Albrecht, the familiar face, 443 Mead Circle, replacing Fred Simmers, who has moved from the city for a term expiring April 30th, 2016. I see Lee in the audience. I don't see Heather. Andrew's up here. Anybody, Lee, did you want to come and address the body on the matter? All right, come on, come forward.
Come on, Lee.
Welcome back, by the way. You know the routine.
You're lucky I didn't talk about the last thing. I enjoy the responsibility of being in the Industrial Development Commission. I was on it before when I was an alderman. I look forward to trying to help new businesspeople come into town, create jobs, or businesses that are here retain their jobs. So I'd appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thanks, Lee. Any discussion? Seeing none, please cast your ballots.
Motion carried. Eight As and zero Nays.
Thank you. Activity has picked up in terms of requests for that commission, so felt it necessary to fill those slots. Item 10 is Standing Council Committee reports. Item A is the Finance and Property Committee meeting held January 7. Alderperson Young?
Finance and Property Committee met at 5:00 PM on Tuesday, January 7, in the first-floor conference room at City Hall. All members were present. A list of others in attendance is on file in the clerk's office. Item two, there were no special beer license applications. Item three is special events application filed by Heart of Wisconsin Chamber of Commerce for a winter sports fest to be held February 22 at Witterfield and the Warming House to include vending, a special beer license, and suspension of the open container ordinance. It was moved and seconded with the additional provision that the rink is closed for the event. The motion carried. Item four, renewal application for a secondhand article dealer license filed by Michael Nichols for GameStop number 3254, located at 930 Coon Avenue. It was moved and seconded to approve, and that motion carried. Item five, a request from Ellen Rustler, WRCT Executive Director for use of the Riverwalk for Artie Grau 2014 on March 6 through 9, 2014. It was moved and seconded to approve the request, including serving sale of intoxicating liquor that evening, provided a Riverwalk application is completed and that any staged balcony or temporary structure is approved by city staff. Any setup or takedown of chairs, tables, et cetera, will need to be worked out directly with Rapid Small, and there may be a fee charged. So again, that motion carried. Item six, consider a recommendation from Statewide Services to deny a claim from Pam Grimm for damage to the basement of her residence due to sewer drainage backup. It was moved and seconded to deny that claim. The motion carried. Item seven, a request from Planning and Economic Development Director Adam Teigen to approve an intergovernmental agreement for building inspection services with the village of Port Edwards. It was moved and seconded to approve that agreement. The motion carried, and there is an attachment describing that agreement. Item eight, beverage operator license applications. A, it was moved and seconded to approve the new license applications for those listed. That motion carried. B, there were no renewal license applications, and C, there were no applications denied by the police chief. Item nine, audit of the bills. It was moved and seconded to pay the bills for the vouchers listed. That motion carried. Item 10, review the referral list. The committee reviewed the list. The committee also makes a referral to review recurring special events applications. And item 11, it was moved and seconded and approved to adjourn at 5:26 PM. With that, I'd make a motion to approve those, these minutes.
We have a motion. Is there, and a second? Any discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, please cast your ballots.
Motion carried. Eight As and zero Nays.
Item 10B, Public Works Committee meeting held January 7. Real?
Thank you, Your Honor. The Public Works Committee met at 6:00 PM on Tuesday, January 7, 2014, in the first-floor conference room in City Hall. All members were present. Also attending were Alderperson Chad World, Dave Laspa, and Nick Domes. Number one, item number one, and the meeting was called Order Number Two, preliminary resolutions for curb and gutter, sidewalk, permanent street surfacing, and concrete driveway approaches at 150, 160, 161, 170, and 171, 15th Avenue North. It has south, it should be north. There was a motion and a second to approve the preliminary resolution, and that motion carried, and that resolution is attached in the minutes. Item number three, preliminary resolutions for sidewalk and concrete driveway approaches on 23rd Avenue South, north of Gainer Avenue, at parcel 34-04503. There was a motion and a second to approve the preliminary resolution, and that motion carried, and that resolution is attached with the minutes. Item number four was permission to request bids for the 2014 curb and gutter and sidewalk contract. There was a motion and a second to approve requesting bids, and that motion carried. Item five, permission to request bids for the 2014 concrete pavement patching contract. There's a motion and a second to approve requesting bids, and that motion carried. Item six, permission to request bids for the 2014 asphalt paving contract. There's a motion and a second to approve requesting bids, and that motion carried. Item seven, permission to request bids for casing pipes installed under the CN Railroad at 17th Avenue South. There was a motion and a second to approve requesting bids, and that motion carried. Permission to request bids, item eight, permission to request bids for LED rapid flashing beacon at 10th Avenue and West Grand Avenue, and additional detector loops on the east leg of the State Highway 54 and County Trunk W intersection. There was a motion and a second to approve requesting bids, and that motion carried. Item nine, review and recommend approval of a quote for a soil investigation required by the CN Railroad at 17th Avenue South. There was a motion and a second to approve requesting bids, and that motion carried. Item 10, review proposed TMDL stormwater regulations for the Wisconsin River. The committee reviewed the proposed TMDL stormwater regulations for the Wisconsin River. Item 11, review the proposed 2014 public works schedule. The committee reviewed the proposed 2014 public work schedule. Item 12 was to review the referral list. The committee reviewed the referral list. Item 13 was to adjourn, there was a motion and a second to adjourn, and that motion There was a motion and a second to adjourn, and that motion carried. The meeting adjourned at 6:42 PM, and with that, Your Honor, I move for adoption of the report.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the public works report? Seeing none, please cast your ballots.
Motion carried. Eight As and zero Nays.
Item 10C, Human Resources Committee meeting held December 17th and January 14th. Alderperson Nash.
Human Resources Committee has two reports. Human Resources Committee met at 5:00 PM on Tuesday, December 17th, 2013. All members were present. Item one, the meeting was called order at 5:00 PM. Item two, discuss and approve a request to change three part-time ordinance control officer positions to one full-time ordinance control officer and fill the position. Motion was made and seconded to approve the request to change three part-time ordinance control officers to one full-time ordinance control officer and fill a position. The motion passed, and attachment number one. Item number three is discuss the creation of a Director of Innovation and Technology position. The mayor discussed his thoughts regarding the creation of the Director of Innovation and Technology position, and no action was taken. There's attachment two, though, that explains this position. Item four, the meeting adjourned at 5:37 PM. Report number two, the Human Resources Committee also met at 4:00 PM on Tuesday, January 14th, 2014. All members were present except for Chad Worle, who was excused. Item one, the meeting was called order at 4:00 PM. Item two, discuss the creation of a Director of Innovation and Technology position, including compensation for the position and approval to fill the position. Motion was made and seconded to approve the creation of a Director of Innovation and Technology position with the compensation set at a grade 17, resulting in a salary range of $70,000, $73 to $79,281, and approval to fill the positions. The attachments one and two. Item number three, the meeting adjourned at 4:40 PM, and I'll move for approval of both reports.
Yeah, you gotta hit your button. We're in the 21st.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion. Alderperson Rayom?
Your Honor, I guess I would like to hold out item two of the second report.
Motion, request was to hold out item two on the second report? That's, so, hold out the report on the 14th? Okay?
I guess it is.
All right. Thank you for the clarification. Alderperson, did you have a comment? Alderperson Rayom beyond that? Okay, alderperson Kirkpatrick?
I had two questions, but I'll wait for the discussion on that one there that you held out. Regarding the first report, the full-time ordinance control officer, this is reporting to Adam's office? Okay. It always kind of seems to go back and forth between some of us, you know? Is it going to have enough teeth in Adam's office? Should it be out of the police department where, you know, there's a supposed badge of authority that people recognize more often than just saying, "Well, I'm with Adam's office." I mean, are we good with that? Is this, I mean, obviously, this is what you guys are proposing to us, Bob, but I just, just a little clarification, if you might. You're a little in-depth.
Oh, I'll let, I'll go first, but I just, the, I believe they were under the police department at one time, weren't they, for a little while? And then they were kind of stealing them. And so, that's all I have to say on that.
Chief isn't here to defend that. Adam, did you want to add anything further on the question?
Just to clarify, I have no desire to have this position in my department because it's just a lot of headaches. But I did sit down with the police department prior to bringing this to HR, and based on the conversations with them, they were happy to leave it in my department as well. But we are working together so that we'll have him interact with the police department more, so that there's a little more, I guess, of that authority there than just the guy coming from the zoning and planning department.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Responsibility for enforcement. Nobody wants to have their name attached. Okay. Any further discussion on the first report? All right. Seeing none, please cast your ballots.
Motion carried. Eight As and zero Nays.
Thank you. Then, the action then remains on the second report on January 14th. Alderpersons, what are your wishes regarding that report?
Your Honor, if I may say something?
Yep. Alderperson Rayom?
Trying to get back to the... There we go. Was any, I guess, Mayor, I guess this request basically came from you, I do believe, that was any consideration given to or contact with the individual that's in, or in information systems, the information system specialist of things that could be or needed to be done? You know, and in some of these letters, it's, that it's difficult to get things done with the way the setup is in the department and to go, part of this is to streamline that so people can get the reports they want, so people can get, can apply for things in a timely manner and that type of stuff. I just, the application of what this person would be doing, I just, I don't necessarily see how they're going to do one and what the other leads to as promoting the city and to come up with ideas and things like that. I have, I guess, who's going to hire this individual? Again, though, back, just back to, was there a person in information systems involved in this at all? And would there be a way that, to do some of this work, that somebody would be brought on if it'd be part-time to help out to accomplish some of these things? Again, that we've cut jobs in different places, as was mentioned even in our committee of the whole meeting, that to then add positions like this, when maybe we have people on staff that can do it, and that maybe we could, if we need, to bring somebody on board in a temporary manner to do something. So, I oppose the creation of this new job, and I intend to vote that way, and I guess that's all for now.
I think you asked a question directed. I mean, I'll try to answer maybe the question and a couple of answers, actually, in your long question. The first question was regarding what consultation with the existing IS area. At present, the city contracts with the Water and Light Utility for IT services, and the intention of this position is to roll our current IS Information Systems Department into the Department of Innovation and Technology. And the work area and the primary focus of the individual that works at City Hall right now is primarily a help desk technician who runs around and really puts out fires all day long. The kind of focus and purview of this position is more of a director, is a director-level position, in which would be charged with spearheading and championing special projects. So, anything above and beyond the kind of support function that the existing individual provides. The hope is that individual will then evaluate that person's performance and decide if it makes sense for us to bring that individual onboard as an individual of, employee of record of the city as opposed to the Water and Light Utility. So, hopefully, that answers the question. I think in terms of streamlining the work, great strides have been made following conversations I had with the general manager and with Matt Stormin over at Water and Light on how we can prioritize that individual's workload so they can better respond to issues all over City Hall or at the fire department or at the city garage. So, I think, you know, those things have been happening in parallel with this position. As you can see this person by the attachments that are in the council packet this evening, many departments responded to this very favorably in the sense that they recognized there was a strong need for somebody to champion special projects, to make sure that these things are followed through beyond simply putting out fires as relates to IT issues throughout the multiple city buildings. So, hopefully, that responds to your point. I think in light of maybe some concerns about eliminating positions, you know, I think, you know, priorities change over time, and as we add equipment and as we add different efficiency in different areas, employment levels fluctuate, and I think that's a natural part of any business, whether it's government or et cetera. So, alderperson Young, you have a question?
Nope. I simply wanted to make a motion to approve. I think we discussed, debated, you and I talked during the budget process about this position, so I'd just make a motion to approve.
Got a motion to approve. Is there a second? Shane's caught up. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Alderperson Kirkpatrick?
Thank you. And I apologize. I would just like a quick refresher as far as they go. What, Mayor, do you feel are top two or three priorities for this individual who would be incoming into this position? What's a long-term vision? I mean, is this going to be two- or three-year position and then a reevaluation of duties or the position itself? Or is this something that you envision going on much longer? I guess, quite simply, is there enough for this person to do? And then, what's our benchmark and our measurability on this position?
So, we've got four questions. I'm going to try to address the first question. That was long-term survivability, I guess, of the position. It would be evaluated just like any other position. Is there work? Is there still the need? Is it still relevant? Like any other position, we would evaluate. I think just by nature of technology and innovation that there's always going to be a cry for the need for this position. In terms of special projects or charges in the beginning, you and others have called for paperless council meetings if council members so wish, and I think that could be a special project right out of the, right out of the gate that the person could work on. Secondly, is the city website. We recognize the city website is an inhibitor in ways for people to get information easily, and I think we budgeted for the city website. It's got to happen in 2014 since we've got the funds there, and that could be another project that that person would champion. Beyond that, it's, you can see there's a lot of special projects that, like open records requests, just finding a mechanism for us to get data accessible throughout departments. I think many departments have needs for software, HR, finance, et cetera. The street department's integrating Cartograph right now, and they're having some hiccups. And frankly, having an individual help them implement that software into their business process is critical. So, if there's three or four areas, I think, to answer that question, remind me again on the other two.
That actually fairly well, fairly well caught it up. Thank you very much.
Yeah. I think vision really comes down to, just in the initial term, is what are the pressing issues? And then, long-term, building relationships outside the city with the local Midstate Technical College or UWSP tech community to start developing these things. So, that would be a part of the vision piece.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. Shane's ready now. Thank you, Shane. It does. Not sure. Now he's ready.
Motion carried. Seven As and one Nay.
Thank you, council members. Item 11, miscellaneous reports. Item A, the Airport Commission meeting held December 5th and 8th. As a point to the council members, there's been questions that I've gotten at my office as the Chair of the Commission regarding airport tree cutting. We've got a letter that will be going to all adjacent property owners near the airport explaining to them where we're at in the process, so I can get a copy of that all to you as well if you've gotten questions or concerns about, heard concerns about that. Item B, the monthly report of the Wisconsin Rapids Police Department for December. Item C, Waterworks and Lighting Commission held December 11th. The regular meeting in December 11th, the Personnel Committee. Item D, the quarterly report for the Wisconsin Rapids Police Department for July, August, and September 14. Should be 2013, I believe. That autocorrect in the clerk's office. Item E, Housing Authority held November 20th. Item F, the Police and Fire Commission held December 3rd and 4th. Item G, McMillan Memorial Library Board of Trustees held December 18th. Item H, the Park and Recreational Commission, Recreation Commission held December 11th. Item I, the Wastewater Treatment Commission held January 8th. Item J, the Wisconsin Rapids Fire Department Organizational Summary for December. And item K, the monthly report out of River Cities Community Access for December, a new report that Tom was encouraged to submit to the council. Council members, what are your wishes?
Motion to approve. Place on file.
We have a motion. Is there a second? A motion and second. Any further discussion on those reports? Seeing none, please cast your ballots.
Motion carried. Eight As and zero Nays.
Item 12 is items for new business at the February 18th council meeting, a public hearing and a resolution for the vacation of Clivian Avenue between 14th Place and 15th Place South. An additional item that I think maybe we want to have a discussion before adjournment tonight would be regarding the February 18th council meeting, so we'll wait until the end of the meeting for that, on that meeting. Item 14. Item 13 doesn't exist. Shane advised me that that should be struck. Item 14 is on ordinances. Item A is a second reading of an ordinance increasing the sewer utility fee. See attachment number five. And I would add that section three at the bottom, we'll go ahead and read the ordinance, and then we can make a note on the item three. A general ordinance amending sections 806, 076A and 8076C of the Wisconsin Rapids Municipal Code entitled Sewer Regulation. Now, therefore, the common counsel of the City of Wisconsin Rapids does ordinate as follows. Section 1, section 8076A and 8076C of the Wisconsin Rapids Municipal Code entitled Rate Determination are hereby amended to read as follows. Charges levied on residential, industrial, commercial, institutional, and governmental users which discharge wastewater of strength equal to or less than domestic wastewater will be billed at the rate of $5 per 1,000 gallons, also equal to $3.74 per 1,100 cubic feet. The minimum monthly charge shall be $13.80. Billing for usage or consumption shall commence after 748 gallons or 100 cubic feet, has been used and shall continue at $5 per 1,000 gallon rate. The city reserves the right to impose higher minimum charges for commercial, industrial, governmental, and/or institutional users. Now, the sewer charge for users discharging wastewater with BOD, TSS, TKN, or total phosphorus concentrations in excess of the values for domestic wastewater as defined in section 801 of the ordinance shall be based on the schedule of the unit as follows. Volume $5, BOD surcharge .68 cents, total suspended solid surcharge .534 cents, total phosphorus surcharge $5.898, TKN surcharge .194. Section 2, all ordinance or parts of ordinances in conflict here with, are hereby repealed, and this ordinance shall take effect not on January 1st, 2014, because this is the second reading, but upon passage and publication of the ordinance. Council members, what are your wishes regarding that ordinance? We have a motion to approve. Is there a second? Uh, Bob? We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please cast your ballots.
Motion carried. Seven As and one Nay.
Item B, as an ordinance correcting the legal description of ordinance number 997, which annexed property along Witrock Avenue adopted by the council in October of 2004. See attachments number six and number seven. I'd entertain a motion on that ordinance. Council members, what are your wishes regarding that request?
Yep. Motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Any discussion? Gene was second, I believe, unless somebody else. I heard Gene on the left. Any discussion on that request? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. Some batteries might be...
Motion carried. Eight As and zero Nays.
Item 15, referral of communications to committees, and item 16 is adjournment prior to adjournment. My understanding is the February 18th council meeting is on the primary day, and so I wanted to know if the council members had any specific feedback on Election Day and the council meeting that day, which I'd entertain discussion or comments following the meeting. I think, I understand past practice was that council meetings were avoided on Election Day. I'm not sure if anyone had strong feelings. Any other feedback either way on that? Bob's out of town regardless? Okay? All right. So, we'll go ahead and get the meeting scheduled then based on that. then, based on that feedback. I understand I still set the council date. We still have to have a regular monthly meeting, but maybe Tom and I can speak about his concerns. Okay. Entertain a motion to adjourn?
No.
A second, all in favor?
No.
Stand adjourned. Thank you for being here. Thank you for watching at home. Have a good rest of your month.